We stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Careful moment of silence just for all, all the officers and people, people in military who died in the past year. Just a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. First thing we'll go over is the abstracts. I'm hoping everybody's had a chance to take a look at them. If there are not any, any questions or anything add on, I need a motion to approve them.
Motion we approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carry. We'll go through the department heads. This is Bill. Jason, oh, Jason's there. Go ahead, Jason.
Jason, you can unmute yourself. Hey, Jason, you out there? There you are.
I'm here.
There you are.
Go ahead, Jason.
Hi there.
Hi.
My report was pretty short and sweet here since we just got to the first of the month, so really the plan's running quite well. Crafts are working pretty good with us, bills and what have you, so we're getting through most of our issues without a bang, knock on wood. I do have one request this month, that's for the purchase of a limo actuator to replace a failed unit. It's actually more upfront cost than our last one, but it's a less cost in the future. That's for twenty-three-hundred-and-twelve dollars fifty cents, that's an eighty percent village cost and a twenty percent near city cost, and we do have money on that line for this, for this purchase.
Eric, we need a motion for that?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Carry.
Thank you, that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
No, that's it, Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill's with us?
Yep. Hey, Bill.
Go ahead, Bill.
How you doing folks, how you doing today?
Doing okay.
Thank you.
They don't have too much to, I don't have anything to ask for tonight. No big updates from, really from last month, mostly just going back and forth with different funding agencies on the various projects, the water and sewer and the stream sites, and waiting on several funding applications from EFC and other agencies, so kind of fingers crossed over the next month or so, but nothing, nothing too big and crazy this month.
That's it?
I can, I can go through it line by line if you want.
No, 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 that's good, no, I'm not complaining.
If there's any questions on the report, let us know, but most, most everything that's on there is ongoing projects. Like I said, most of it's funding applications that are being submitted and, you know, we're kind of waiting on some of the agencies and others that we do have approval, like the water project, we're trading and go back and forth with the various state agencies and just working through that process.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good night.
You too. Is there anybody else on there tonight or?
The department heads, uh, no.
That's it, right?
I thought you had asked about one of them.
Yeah, I've got his, uh... Okay. Leave it off. So, yeah, they're seeking permission to replace one of the furnaces above the theater. One is starting to give some issues. It's not been dependable, it's been part of the plan to replace these furnaces throughout the budget, budgeting year. They do have money to cover that. The cover is seven, uh, the cost is seven thousand eight-hundred-sixty million dollars, and ANC is the contracting company. They get contracted, they're really four hundred dollars a year to maintenance furnaces. It's budgeted for and it's a part of the plan, so I'll make a motion that we approve that purchase.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry. Okay. Code?
So, I gave you reports of...
Yep.
...activity. We seem to still be having trouble with roofings without permits. So, I'll try and crack down that on as best I can. Some construction coming up, but nothing significant at the moment. Quite a few real estate change of hands, searches for property data searches, et cetera.
While you're here on the code, we should bring up, I would imagine, if you want to, unless you want to go into executive session later and bring it up then come back if there's...
Uh, no, let's see what happened.
We've had, uh, go ahead, Eric, you take it away.
Yep, so we've interviewed some candidates to hire a new code enforcer. It's been, been a bit of a process, but we even found a candidate and would like to put him forward for the board to consider to hire, that would be Josh Morgan, who would be upon appointment, I'm not sure when that would take, take effect, but I would make that recommendation that we hire him, the code enforcer.
Recommend or motion?
I will recommend in the form of a motion.
Just before we do, let's just see if there's any more discussion on it, okay?
Sure. I will...
I mean, Dan, I, you've, you've talked to all of them.
Correct.
And you've got, in your thirty-plus years of experience, how do you feel?
I think Mr. Morgan will be a good choice. I think he would be the best of the three I've interviewed.
And you seem to feel like the person that could take challenges when people come on? And you feel the same way as Eric?
I feel like he'd be a good fit and if we can work with the town in the future, make a full-time position, we would be open to that possibility as well. But this is just getting, you know, our priorities straight in the village.
You know, he'll, he'll need training and he'll need to gain experience, but I think, I think he's got the basic qualifications to meet the need.
I had a conversation with Steve Dutcher today. He said that he sat down with him also, I guess, a month ago or whatever, and talked to him about the flooding and everything, and Steve offered his, his, his help with him. He, he's the one we're gonna hire, he said he would sit down with him and help him through the flood process and what he's gonna do and, and work with him as much as he can to help him out, which he's gonna need, because the flood especially has become a big, big thing for us in the village and, and I think would be important. So I was glad that he at least, you know, I sat down with him and I asked him, he said, yes, he would help, because he lives here too. Yeah, so even though he's worked for the town, he still lives here.
Yes, yeah. It affects, it affects a lot of things.
Yeah.
Yeah, so following up on the references for Josh Morgan, did realize that there's a training for flood certification being offered in Scary. The code enforcer from Delhi goes to that, the county code enforcer goes to that. So I said, you know, keep us in the loop on that so we can coordinate to make sure we get him, or whoever's in that position on board to get that certification and training. But, yeah.
When was he available to start?
As, as soon as we made approval.
Dan has offered to stay a little bit to help out if he needed any help to be here a little while, and I think that might be a good, good thing to do.
I agree, I mean, Dan's getting caught up.
Right.
You've got a feel for what's going on around here.
Yeah.
And you know what projects have been started lately, year lately.
A lot of year lately.
Rather than, rather than starting from, you know, from zero and trying to build up that, you know, that, that experience, I think that's the appropriate thing to do, and I think there's enough funds left in the coming year to, to cover, you know, a few months together.
I was pretty light on the, on the budget, so...
Yes, you were.
I know you got a lot of other things, but if you can come in today here and there and help him, I, I, I think that would be a really...
Yeah.
Our, our code enforcements in the past have never had that, I don't think. I think they've all just jumped in and just wing it until you, until you learn it or they can store all the stuff and they want, if they keep it for like sixty days, they have enough space that they could do that, then turn it over, so... It seems like everything's just fitting in good for doing it.
At least by sending them, I think they'll have an idea.
Yep.
I don't really know what all the ins and outs are to them, I wonder if you have to have to keep the...
I think it's sixty days.
I, I think it's both looking at.
So you're gonna make the motion then?
I'll make a motion then.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you mind repeating the motion for the camera? Ironically, the camera...
We're gonna send the chief and, and our clerk to a training session in Albany for use of body cam, please, department.
All right, I apologize, thanks.
Okay, all right, yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll go to the trustee reports. What do you have for us?
Well, I have four, uh, four potential hires for the park and pool this summer. I don't know if those are names I should bring up here, that's probably, definitely still executive session, right?
No, go ahead, you're the one hired, go ahead.
So I can say names and, and pay, pay, pay rates. So we, uh, we intend to hire Carissa, Carissa Crandall as a mower at twelve-fifty an hour, and she will start on May nineteenth. And Anthony Seta would be our other mower at twelve-fifty an hour, starting on June twenty-eighth. Our pool lead guard will be Grace Reinhardt at twelve-sixty an hour, and she'll be starting on May twenty-fifth. And to run our basketball program in the park, we would like to hire Dylan Jacobs at twelve-fifty an hour, starting on June twenty-eighth. And I guess I could, can I make a motion now that we hired these people at these rates?
Yes.
So I've moved that we hire Carissa Crandall, Anthony Seta as mowers, Grace High, Grace Reinhardt as pool lead guard, and Dylan Jacobs to run our basketball program.
Need a second on that?
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Carry.
There, we are going to be running, we're looking for more lifeguards, so I'm hoping the camera can hear me. We would definitely like to hire several more lifeguards for the summer, we are running a little low at the moment. There will be a lifeguard course that's going to be offered in the middle of June's. The date, the dates, times, and costs are still a little up in the air, it's not a huge cost. It's gonna be sometime in the middle of June, so if anyone is interested, preferably an older high school student or maybe a college student, we would love for you to please put in an application with the village, come to, come down to Village Hall and put in an application to be a lifeguard, because we need you. We can train you and we have the technology. We would like to hire more swimming instructors. Right now, we don't have enough lifeguards with swimming instruction certifications to do our first session of swimming lessons. However, sometime in early June, we will have somebody during, coming in, excuse me, in early July to teach a course for swim safety instruction. And once that course is completed, then those lifeguards could teach swimming lessons and we can have our second session in August. Right now, it's looking like we probably are not going to have enough to have our first session in July. So, yeah, swimming lessons are being determined, we need, we need our WSI guards and we will, we will and we can train you, so please, come down and put in an application at Village Hall, we need your help. We want to keep our pool going and we want swimming lessons this year. Some things that are being done at the pool before, in lieu of opening, we're hoping to open on, I believe, June twenty-sixth, yes, June twenty-sixth, barring the creek rising and anything else happening. That's going to be our opening date for the pool this year. Before that, we are buying twenty gallons of pool paint at seventy-three dollars a gallon for fourteen-hundred-and-sixty dollars, so we'll be painting the pool. Another two gallons of red safety paint to paint our lines in the pool at one forty-six dollars, shipping is eighty dollars. The total on that is sixteen-eighty-six. And then on the tennis court, we have bought fifty gallons of tennis court stealer for seven-ninety-five, and we got a fifty dollar discount on that, which is nice, and the shipping is one sixty-four-eighty-six. These are all in the, the current budget for, for this year before the pool opens, so that's not an ask to buy something, just something that we're doing to, to spruce up the pool and to fix our tennis courts, because they're in rough shape right now. We're gonna have our basketball, we're going to have arts and crafts. Unfortunately, we can't do the tennis because the tennis court is, is kind of in disrepair, so we're gonna fix the tennis court and hopefully we'll have tennis again next year. Like we said previously, field hockey was a bit of a bust last year, we just didn't have enough participants, so we're, we're not doing the field hockey this year. But there will still be lots of fun things to do at the park, so come on down and have a great time this year. With the theater, if anyone saw me ferociously messing with my phone, I was trying to be rude. I had an email on here from Jim Rice that I was pulling up, and somehow I accidentally deleted. But one of the big things is the Catskill dance moves. We'll be putting on a performance in the theater either June or July fourteenth and fifteenth, and I'm gonna have to come back with those dates because I'm gonna have to talk to Jim. But they're going to be wanting to use the boardroom here as a gathering place, because it's kind of a backstage area for the theater. This is something they've done before, and I'll probably have to get back with the exact dates once I, once I speak to Jim. The theater, the company that runs the theater, RSS, they're trying very, very, very hard to get the theater up and running for movies as soon as possible. They're working with their organization and their employees to make sure everything is safe and ready to go, but they are absolutely trying to get open for movies very soon. We're hoping to have our first live performances in the theater coming this September. You can also look to the excellent video that the mayor made this week, and he'll tell you a little bit more about it. And that's what I've got for now.
You said it all, I had a copy of the thing you were gonna give you, but you said it all, you got it, good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eric, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, just to go over more DPW stuff, they've been doing a lot of work cleaning up, just the spring transition of mess that always accumulates. But, and one of those things that they've been working on is keeping up on the mowing until we have our mowing hires for the summer. It's, to my knowledge, I don't think we got any applications yet or we have advertised yet, but...
Just that one said he hired for the park thing.
Okay, okay, yeah, so they're making that transition there. They did repainting some traffic arrows at Gardner Place, kind of making things more aware for drivers, and I know we discussed possibly doing more signage at some point, just to make sure no cars end up going the opposite direction there. Zoning, like we just discussed, been interviewing candidates throughout the month, and happy that we're able to take care of that tonight and move forward. It's expected that he'll have more of an office presence to help process permits, you know, be able to handle the calls and just, just be there for people in probably one of the peak moments of construction season. But, so that's it.
Thank you, Eric, I thank you for doing all the interviews, I mean, I know there's a lot of time you have to put into it, but I, I think the end result is gonna be really well. At least you can say you were diligent, you did the right thing, we looked them over all, and I appreciate you putting in the time for that, thank you.
After the support I had had too, thanks.
Well, we're all a team, right, we're all here to support each other. Dick, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. Up to me, I, unfortunately, I have a bunch of things I want to go over, so just bear with me for... The first thing I want to bring up is Rita Ray, she wrote a letter, you all seen it regarding last year when she got hurt and Mr. President and Andy Biggs called me up also, saying that someone must have put this snow there, a problem in, but it wasn't our drivers, and she hasn't paid as of since last winter. And I told her to send the copy, a letter in, just because that's what we normally do, and send pictures, and she did. But I, I tried to explain that this is something that was there, I mean, if we didn't do it, it is there, so, I mean, I don't know what your feelings are, but I just bring it up to the board, go ahead.
I was, I was actually here, she came in, and in fact, a couple of customers, they came in. I have to hand it to Joanne, she's very pleasant with the people she listens to. The reality is, I don't know how the snow got on the sidewalk, the picture she sent you, one of, it shows the sidewalk company was ice, it was after it had been cleared. She didn't actually show any, their complaint was the snow was four feet deep and they, they, they didn't feel that they could handle it during the sidewalk. Subsequently, the DPW or the code enforcement authority, you know, saw it, it had not been cleaned, and per our code, they hired someone to come in and clean it, and they object to, I think it was seventy-five dollars, Joey? The, the cost is seventy-five dollars from having it cleared. They complained the snowblower broke, so they couldn't handle the four feet, or they were too old, they couldn't shovel it. That is part of code, that you have a certain fixed amount of time to get it done. If you don't, we will hire somebody and they will have to pay for it. I did talk to the, the one gentleman myself, and I said, you know, somebody's gonna have to pay for it, and, and, you know, we can't expect the other taxpayers to pay it, clearly you're a sidewalk. The other complaint that they have is the sidewalks below there, I've gone up and I've looked at it, it's one way across, and we just put it over, and there's a section of sidewalk there that is down pretty close to grade with the roadway. However, as you know, we've gone through the sidewalk business and the sidewalks belong to the homeowner. We do pay, we have been agreed to, we pay for concrete, correct, Joey?
Fifty-fifty, yeah.
I'm not mistaken, we will pay for the cost of concrete, they hired their own contractor to put it back in. They ended up under the impression, it's our sidewalk and we're supposed to take care of it. Unfortunately, according to, that's not the case, and as I told, I said, you know, you're just gonna have to pay the seventy-five dollars. And, and I think, because it is, in our code, if that's what happened, I, I think that we have to stick to it.
Rita, we've had this come up before, with snow with water bills.
Yep.
Yep.
So, I just, I said I would write the letter, I would bring it up, and just to make a file, I mean, I know you've confronted us before, but if there is no...
And all I think, and just check what the procedure is, what happens is, if they don't pay it, it will be added to the tax bill.
Correct.
And that, I think we have to prove it, spread it on the tax book, right, Joey?
Um, no, because it, we did that.
Sorry, you've been done?
Yes.
All right, so it will appear on their taxes. We don't accept partial payments, so if they'll have to pay it then...
The snow on sidewalks has been an issue this past winter, so...
Yeah, they, they were not the only ones that got filled.
Yeah.
But they did object.
So there'll be a lot of action at this time, correct?
No action.
Okay. Is there, there was a lady from Gardner Place at the water, we sent her out, she asked to come before the board talk. We sent, Joey sent her the Zoom information, I don't know if she's there or not.
Yep, is that, is that Marlene?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, this is Marlene Cremida.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, thank you, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening, yeah, you can, the floor is yours.
Yes. What, oh, I live in Penine Garden in Play. I was in my house like four days, I think four days, and I received a bill of seven thousand dollars. I requen, I, they told me that I should hire a plumber, which I did, I hired a plumber and also an engineer, and we have no leaks, so I've been living there for almost two years, we only go like every other weekend maybe, and I never had such a big bill, and I have no leaks in my house, and I request for the water department to check the meter, and they say the meter is fine. And I spoke to one of the girls who work there, she says to me, you'd be surprised how much water you can spend, that there is no way I can spend seven thousand dollars in four days, and only for a couple of hours only, because we go there, maybe started, we stay three or four hours and we leave. We only flush the toilet maybe once or twice, we don't even take a shower, we make a cup of tea, we go back home. And I wanna go back and take my, my parents, and then we have no water now. I paid seventeen hundred dollars for them to install the water and to have the meter checked, and they told me the meter is fine, but something is not right, because how can I spend seven thousand dollars in four days? And no leaks, I have no leak. I have an engineer, I have the plumber, they told me you have to hire a plumber from Warden, which I did. Even the guy who took the, to pick up the meter, he checked, there was no leaks in my, in my house. So I don't know what else to do. I have no water, which I don't think is normal for a person, not to have water in the house. I mean, something gotta be done, I have no leak in my house at all. I was checked for an engineer and a plumber, so what else to do? Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the water is shut off now?
Yes, been shut off since, I believe, since January, I have no water.
We, we shut, we, we shut, if I may say, we, we shut off, we...
I paid seventeen hundred dollars for them to check the meter, they, they say they sent the, the meter to be checked out, they say the meter is fine, so something is not right here, and I know, there is no way in earth that I can spend two thousand dollars flushing the toilet three or four times, because I didn't even take a shower there. I mean, you can ask the neighbors, I'm never there, I don't understand it. No, I asked around, they said there is no way, something's gotta be wrong, because I asked the people around, I went to... Yes. I've been paying whatever it's supposed to pay, which is a normal thing, I don't, I don't own a washing machine, I don't have a, a pool, I don't wet the grass, I don't know, something's gotta be wrong, I'm not even on a horse, to be honest with you. It's only myself, my husband and my daughter that we go there, and that's it. We usually go sometimes at ten o'clock and tell them the morning, we leave at around one o'clock. Even you guys know when I turn off the water, when I turn off the water too, and I have no leaks.
I think that the mayor would like to say something.
Well, I, I, I spoke to you on the phone prior.
Yes.
The, the reason why your water is off now, because we sent you an email when you wanted to put the meters back in and we returned it on. No, what are we gonna, we're gonna wait for the payment? You, you're on, you're on, you, you, you were supposed to be on a payment plane, correct?
Yeah, but sir, I'm supposed to pay seven thousand dollars for four days of using the water?
Well...
Does that make any sense? I mean, that means that when you put the meter back on and turn off the water, every time I go to my house, it's gonna be two thousand dollars for four hours?
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I tried to explain it to you on the phone. We checked the meter, if you would let me talk a little bit, I appreciate it. We, we sent the meter out on your behalf to make sure that there were, there's a one-on-one chance there'd be something wrong with the meter, and I explained this to you before, if the meter was broken or had a problem, it would be that nothing would show up. You would have no water, no water bill, nothing on our end would show up. But when the water goes through, it's not on our end, it's someplace in the house, there is water leaking coming through. It's not coming from our end, it's coming from within the house. It's nothing that we can do, that we did wrong or, or omitting, it's, it's something in the house. And we checked the pressure, we checked everything, there, there, there has to be something inside that house for some reason that is leaking. It has nothing to do with the village, it's not outside, it's nothing that we're doing that's making the water run like that.
Okay. The guy who picked up the meter to, to get it replaced, to take it, to send it out, he checked that, because he was there with the plumber. He saw it, there was no water running from my part in my house.
There may not have been, there may not have been, they may not have...
He checked, he was there when the, when the, when the plumber was checking, but there's no leaks in your house. Something is not right, he said, it's not from your side, it's not from my side. So the only thing I, I will think, because now that they're gonna install the meter, how about when they install the meter, everything is good? So I still have to pay seven thousand dollars every time I go to my, or two thousand dollars to my house? Does that make any sense for somebody to flush the toilet twice or three times, I believe, because they were testing? Doesn't make any sense for somebody to flush the toilet twice or three times, I believe, because they were testing twenty-six gallons, he shows on the meter. How could that be? And the guy was there. He said, this is not right. He said, I have no leaks in my house. You can ask the plumber from Warden. He's a licensed plumber.
And we, but you, you, you keep going, you're going around and around with the same thing. We, we're telling you that there's nothing wrong with the meter.
The one who's gonna get hurt is me. I go home and I'm gonna fly to the, I'm gonna go take a shower, I'm gonna spend two thousand dollars? Doesn't make any sense to anybody. Please, hear me out. I can understand it.
The, I don't know how long the house has been vacant for before you took it over.
No, no, the house has been, people have been going in. You can ask the neighbor.
Well, if there was, I mean, there, there could be some water infrastructure in the house that can't be visible by just a simple inspection by the meter point. It's possible that there could be some aging infrastructure within the house that could be attributing to that. So, it's a complicated issue, and as the mayor explained, on our end, we've checked. And it's, we do not see an issue on that end, unfortunately.
Mr. Paul and Mr. Mayor, also, this is, this is George from my latest house. I was there, would look at your guys when, you know, they turned on the water to test the mirror. And we did test the mirror. The guy put the microphone on to check. There was, there is no leaks in the house. And the day they, they did turn on the water, I went upstairs and I flushed the three toilets that is in the house. That's the only thing I did, and the water was shut down. And I called the next day, Monday was a holiday, Tuesday, and Jody, I think, she told me that I used twenty-six gallons of water. What I'd like to do right now, because I know I wanna go over and over the same thing, I would like to, to have the, the mirror, because there's no water in the house. I mean, we can't even go to the house. We are on the payment plan. And I would like to have the mirror back in place now that it came back from the manufacturer. And I would try, you know, try to test it again, to see what the problem is. But, you know, if I see that, I would do the same thing that I did last, a month ago, when they, you know, when they turned on the mirror for five minutes. I would do the same thing. I would go and flush the three toilets and see if I spent the twenty-six gallons. You know, it, it's not feasible for, for us to, you know, to go there three weekends and spend seven thousand dollars for the water. And the past two years, we'll be living, you know, we'll be going to the house, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty dollars every three months.
Normal.
You know, normal, normal use, normal price. But, you know, the past six months, it just went out, out, out of, out of control.
Last year.
Oh, last year, you know, whatever just happened, you know, that, that bill, I mean, we, we went there. And there is no leaks in the house. There is no, no problem with the infrastructure, all the pipes, you know, copper and decks. There's no leaks in the house. I mean, I had, I had three, three, two guys from, from Warden and a guy down here, and a junior from down here. I brought him up and said, you know, please check this. But there's no way to check this computerized meters also. Maybe something wrong with the computer. Maybe the wires are crossed and they're reading on the computer something.
That doesn't do with the computer. It has to do with the meter. No.
It, it, excuse me, I, I'm the deputy mayor. And by understanding, you don't live in the house, you're not there all the time?
No.
You'll come up for a weekend? If you left... Excuse me?
One or two weekends a month, maybe.
Okay.
My son is going to Delhi and Calhoun, so we're busy.
Okay.
And we don't spend much time in the house also. We just go, you know, drop a clothes or, you know.
If you had a valve in your toilet...
We go to Delhi to stay with our son. Then we come back home.
Yep, one, one moment. You're trying to...
But if you had a toilet that was running the whole time you were gone, it would use that much water?
No, but we're gonna...
Then they go back, and somebody goes back and they drink over the hell, and what's wrong? So, it didn't mean...
Turn on the water off. I, I started the main valve off. I do not leave the water running.
You shut the water off, the main, the main water off every time you leave?
Then at seven o'clock in the morning, the water was on, and Saturday night or Sunday morning, the water was shut down. I closed the main valve. I never leave the water running. Because I'm, I'm not there. That's why it's gonna freeze. We do not let water run. The valve is always shut. I put it on only when I can.
Okay, but our meters actually record the days that the water is used.
Yes, sir.
So, the water was being used when you weren't there?
We, we...
And, and I cannot stay there a, a full day, me, my wife and my daughter. We can stay there the whole day. It's not feasible to spend two thousand dollars worth of water.
Not in four days, so...
Even if there, all, all the, all the pipes are broken, you know, the, the water running through the mirror, I cannot be physical. To spend two thousand dollars worth of water, and that, that would be like, I don't know, a hundred thousand gallons of water?
I'm not gonna get anything.
I cannot be physical for my happiness, by.
Well, at some point, you must have water running through the meter.
I put on the water and I sat it down on a lip. Ten hours later. It's not feasible. Maybe something wrong with the computer. I'm ready to...
No.
No, 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 no. It's not a computer. It just, it goes, that water went through the meter. And the only place it can go is into your house.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Paul, but...
Now, Mr. Doris.
Very poisonous house. Where can it go in the house? I mean, there's no leaks in the house.
It doesn't have to...
Reoccasions taking the house. Reoccasions.
It doesn't have to be a continuous leak. It could be a toilet. It could be, you'd be surprised. Sometimes, they come up and down the toilet now, and it lasts, can last forever. When you were gone in July, that's when the water, the big bill came, and it shows that the water was running while you were gone. So, most likely, it had to do with the bathroom.
No, but, but in July, we were, three, three days. Or two days, we were in July.
No, 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 no. It was for a whole...
No, it was for a whole month. No, no, it wasn't for three. We have the records to show it. No.
Yes.
No, the records will show that the water was running continuously for several days, not just the four days you were here.
We were there in July, and then we were there...
We, we, you have the report presented to you, right? You need some of them?
And, and we notified you that you had an extensive water use, correct?
We have the, so, we're on the records too. So, there's nothing else we can do with this payment.
No. We're at impasse. We're not gonna go in further.
That's what we're gonna do right now.
No. You're just gonna have to continue to make the payments, is all I can say.
And then if we make the payments, okay, let's say we're gonna make the payment. You're gonna turn on the water, and every time we go to our house, it's gonna be two thousand dollars?
If that's what it takes to get your bill even.
Excuse me?
No.
No, no, she said, every time they go to go there, it'll live there. It's not gonna happen. Every time the water runs in the house, it runs through the computer. We can tell you exactly when it runs, what time, and how much gallons you're using. So, if you, if you start making the payment, then you put the water back on again, and we see that the water is starting to run when you're not there, we will call you and let you know. Because that's what happened last time. That's all we can do.
Let's do that, let's do that. But put the mirror, let's do that. Let's put the mirror on and we'll monitor the water.
I'm gonna figure it out.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna make the water run, you're gonna put the valve...
We did, I mean, like, even, I can't remember, it was like thirteen hundred dollars, or something, I can't remember.
So, it's basically, it's basically...
Because they're supposed to be there before July.
We're gonna monitor now. We'll see.
So, if, if you mail in a payment...
Yes, yes, we are.
And then we can, we can put on the water, and we can monitor it, and the minute it leaks, it runs again, we'll call you and let you know that it's running. And there's, there's someplace, there's something going on within the house. And I know it's hard to believe, but I've had a similar incident, not as high a bill as you, but I've had it pretty high. And I didn't realize, the two toilets were often, sometimes the plug goes up and comes down on its own. It doesn't, I don't know how it happens, but it happened. And you can get some big bill. But if you make some of the payments, we'll put the water back on, and we'll monitor it, and we'll let you know.
Yeah, yeah, yes. We are gonna need to make the payments, but that's, that's, you know, that's not our issue also.
Okay.
We like to have the mirror on. So, we'll, we'll have money for the...
Okay.
Yep. That sounds good.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, I'll try and go through the rest of this really quick. You know what I, I said on the video, there's two new businesses. Mama Me is Smoothies are gonna be on one fifty-eight Delaware Street across from Motos. They're opening up the end of May. All the produce and fruits they're using are gonna be from local farms, so that's a good thing. A new business on West Street, it's gonna be called Packing Heat. They should be opening up the end of June. In regards to that, they're looking to get their liquor license. Normally, municipality has to wait thirty, they wait thirty days for the municipality to give you okay. If there are no issues or anything you could think of, they sent me a letter that says, we are asking that the board would be able to waive the thirty-day requirements so we can begin the process, application process on our liquor license for the restaurant. We will be opening at thirty-eight West Street, and that's Jacob and Lisa Davies. So, if you make a motion...
I don't see a problem with it. They, they spend the liquor licenses there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, just an ongoing.
Yeah. We just gonna, gonna motion. Is that okay?
Motion we waive the thirty-day requirement.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. Just to let you know, we, every year, as you know, we get a check from the town to help with the recreation expenses. This year, the check that we got was three thousand dollars lower than last year. The first thing I was...
No. His request.
Oh, his request. I mean, it's three thousand more for this coming year versus last year. Last year, it was thirty-five thousand. This year, it was thirty-two thousand. I asked Joe Satter about it, and he said, well, that's because we got a bush hog and you paid three thousand and three thousand. And I said, I wasn't aware of what went on at that time. I come in and asked Jody, and no, there was a separate bill that we paid to the bush hog, that we gave them three. I, I went up there again today, and they said that the reason we got the three thousand dollars extra was because they were bush hogging down on Water, down Water Street and getting all those things out, and that's why they gave the extra three thousand dollars. And I said, well, but we still gotta maintain it and take care of it, so.
But certain, with part of the agreement was they have to pay the water fee.
That was, that's, I guess something, they also wanted to give two hundred dollars for the water fee, which is still not enough.
Well, whatever they paid for it. The amount of water used is...
Well, see, when we get grants, everything, we, we can, we can do that with other municipalities, but we have to pay, if I'm not mistaken, we have to pay at the minimum, the capital charge.
Correct.
Right? Is that what it is, Joey?
Yeah.
And the capital charge is every street quarter is eighty-four sixty-seven or something like that. So, that would be like three hundred and change for the year. They gave us two hundred, so I would, I would ask for that minimum.
Yeah. When we had talked to them, they wanted to have that included, whether they pay us for parks and recreation. Now, I don't know how they did the payments for the bush hog.
They did that separate. They, they gave us the check separate.
I was gonna say, because we sent them the bill, and they paid for that, correct, Joey?
Yes.
So, that wasn't part of what they paid us?
No, no, no.
Because the idea was, in part, because we can mow, we're breaking, we're taking out.
Yep.
And that actually belongs down there on us.
But we're, but we're taking care of it.
So, we're the only ones, voters, to actually put it out, but we own it jointly.
Yeah.
Is what that is. But they just don't have any operating, so it would be, be ours. Yeah, I don't, I, I can talk to Joe and see just how we've been breaking down. I know they wanted to, to...
I asked him about it. He said, well, we've done the budget this year. We're not gonna, we're not gonna...
So do I.
Huh?
So do I.
Yeah. So, you want to talk to Joe about it?
To Joe. See what to do.
Okay. And, and it's eighty, we're something and change, but I'll give you the exact number for it.
What they owe, to cover that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, we could take care of the code, and regarding the chemists... We're gonna, we're gonna go into executive session for that. I got, I had a letter here from Joanne Furman, from Fitz Street. Not to read the whole thing. She's been a resident for seventy years, and she's very concerned about the way the condition of the village has been with, I don't know if you've seen this letter or not, but...
Yeah.
So, I will answer her back. I will let her know that we're getting a new code enforcement officer, and we'll be able to address some of these issues. And I already spoke to the police about certain things, and so we'll look into it. So, I just wanted her to know that we're reading the letter, and I will, again, I will answer it.
There's other parts of the letter that mention trees and...
The trees.
We're working on the trees.
And we got the trees. Speaking of the trees, the Chamber wants to buy the trees, some trees to Delaware Street. What they wanna do, I'll show, pass this around. They, they dwarf maple trees. They, they get to be eight or nine feet high. That's, that's as high as they get. And they'll pay for them, and we'll get some help to put them in. And, I don't know what you think, and as far as the flower barrels, they have these green pines they're gonna put on them that, that'll stay all year long, and at Christmas time, they can put a few decorations on them and make them look good as well. And, and these maples will be strong too, even with, Scott Liddy has helped us up at the playing wood, has helped us regarding that. And they'll, they're hardy, and they'll be able to take these, the snow and the salt and things like that. So, I, if I need an okay, to, to let them know they can put those.
I make that motion.
You have nothing to do with us.
Yeah. Not really, but they kept asking that we give them the okay.
Do we need to reach out?
The question has come up previously. They, I hope, they plan on maintaining them too.
Yeah, I told them, I, I did say that.
Do we need to reach out to the state because it's in their right way?
I, I don't, if it's on the sidewalk, I don't know if the state has any objection to it.
Yeah, I'll speak to within tomorrow. I'll give them a call, but I don't think we have.
I mean, it would be on the sidewalk, not in the...
Yeah. On their sidewalk, I know. We always go back and forth on that one, their sidewalk. Okay. Also, Mountain View Estates has, they're refinancing their, their, their whole place. They're looking to do some repairs on the outside and everything. The bank wants them to do a thirty-year mortgage, so they want to increase their, we usually do it like every two to five years. Do it for like twenty-five years, and every, every five years, we'll get the increment at three percent that we get with the money. There's a total money, I think, altogether for fifty, fifty thousand a year. We get, I forgot, I was down there, I forgot. We get... The village gets thirty-one percent, the town gets twenty-seven percent, and the school gets forty-two percent of that. And every time the contract's up every five years, we'll get a three percent increase in it. So, I just need, I, I showed it to Dave Burzick. He's fine with it. He don't see any issues with it. And I just didn't, I'm not gonna sign it until I get the okay from you guys.
Now, to my understanding, too, part of the problem is, when you have commercial property like that, if they have court repairs in and some other stuff, they can break some of it off. It lowers their assessment. And Penny said, we actually come up ahead, but I do like that.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
We're money ahead by accepting it. I mean, it's a payment, you attract.
Attacked, right.
It's a byproduct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I would recommend we do it, and I'd make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Yeah, we've been doing it, I think, since nineteen eighty-five. Okay, thank you on that. Oh, just a little, you know, I think I told everybody, we, we had a discussion of Boyer Road regarding our plows going up there because that was sand and stone years ago, and a lot of potholes there. So, I spoke to the local guy. His name is Keeman. And Butch and I had a phone conference Thursday with the big director from Albany. And I explained to him, and Butch explained to him what we need to do, and he said, okay, we just need to take some pictures. So, Butch and I are going down with their manager this, this Thursday at ten o'clock, just to walk through and take a few pictures. But he said that he would take care of it to make sure that, because I told him that if he didn't, when the snow comes, we're not gonna build a park. Because it's just too dangerous, wanted to destroy our park. And he said he would take care of it, so, just to give you an update on that. I had a little issue with Post Office, not, not me and not us, but they called up regarding Clock Street. Apparently, they were having problems delivering Clock Street. And they weren't going there, and then they came back and called Jody up for Senator Messa, saying that because we don't pay for it, they can't, they can't deliver the mail. So, I went up and said, listen, we don't, we don't do Quarry Road, we don't do St. John's Extension. I said, we don't do the trailer park over there, and you deliver the mail, so that's no excuse. And then I got in touch with his, over the postmaster, and we worked it out, and he says, listen... listen, you've gotta deliver the mail, so they're delivering the mail, so. It shouldn't be on us anyway, but, you know. The only other thing I, I'd like to bring up is I, I know that our meetings have been pretty much close, everything. And I, I, I know we've all got our shots, and who hasn't got a shot, had the virus, and so we've all got the antibodies in here. I'd like to at least have the media come in, one person from the media come in, look through our meeting. Why don't they sit with a mask on, six feet back? That's how I feel, but I don't know what your feelings are on that.
I've been asking for it for several months. I think we can incrementally, have to start incrementally getting back to normal.
If we make just one step at a time, and I, I, I know the city's gonna be open up as of July, and the mayor, I mean, the governor made something today, I don't know, but in July, there's they're gonna start restricting, loosening up a lot more, but just at least that much, we still keep the Zoom, I spoke to Dave Berzick about it. He, he thought it was okay, I spoke to John Mancini from the Conference of Mayors, and he felt the same way, but it's something the board, one of you guys feel about doing.
Yeah, I think we should start doing that. We'll have to figure out, obviously, our setup.
One chair back there.
Right.
Dick, anything to do?
I don't, I don't have a problem with having, you know, a computer.
Okay.
I, 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 it, it's, it's, it's a little tricky, he's not actually having an open meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't know, it's suppressed. From what I understand, the town board does not have, they don't have it suppressed in there.
Yeah. Well, while I spoke to.
But I do think that, in, in the interim, we did for the last, just make sure all the, the reports and stuff, and get the, get the press, get your copy out.
Yeah, yeah, what happened. There's, I, I forgot, I told you the name, I forgot the name of the person, there's somebody new that's gonna be coming. Barbara.
McAllem.
McAllem, huh?
McAllem.
She's on, she's on the Zoom, actually.
Oh, yeah, she's got, she's.
She's been, she's been doing it for a while.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I think that's all I have. So, uh, next thing would be, uh, the Constellation contract extension, Jody?
I sent it to everybody, did you look at it?
Yeah.
It's up to you guys what you do.
You okay with it?
Yeah.
Need a motion?
Well, we need to.
How long are we gonna do it?
What do you wanna do? And it's even higher than it was last time, so.
I was trying.
The longer it goes on, the risk of it keep, keeping, the, keep increasing?
Well, actually, but it, it, it's, it's hard to tell, I mean, it was what happened in Texas, where everybody still went from seven hundred dollars to seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
In a matter of twenty-four hours. And, uh, yeah, the increase, right now, we're with fifty cents, fifty-eight cents. But depending on how long we can do it, 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 you're talking, uh, about seventy cents if we go for three years. What I, what I see there, is that, is that the way we're supposed to read it, Jody? It's a little confusing.
Yeah, it looks, you're closer there.
Because we go from forty-one thirty, if we go for thirty-six minutes, it goes to forty-two oh four.
Yeah.
And then it takes a really big jump if we go for four years, because then it goes up another, another eighty cents. Well, I mean, I, I would, I would go, you know, at that.
Thirty, thirty-six months. Thirty-six months, and three at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would you make a motion after thirty-six months?
Renovate for thirty-six months?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Okay.
Uh, Plankwood resignation. I, I believe you all read the letter, right?
We did, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, we don't have much choice, we, we, I'll do it to your best.
Yeah, right.
We could tell her she's out of state, and I don't think you can make your vote.
No, we can't, no, we can't.
We don't pay them anything.
So, or replace them, is that just an appointment, or the?
Yeah.